Is Matt here?
He's coming.
All right. Do you have a call?
Yes.
Good. Oh, before everything else, yeah. We'll get it through.
Gotcha.
You want to do under correspondence? You can do it before that. Or you want to do after that? In that area, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Stuff right after that will put it there. No, I'll do it after correspondence. All right. Are we ready? Let's see how we got Emery. Call to order. The Open Public Meeting Act. According to the Open Public Meeting Act, this meeting of February 12, 2025, was published in the Bergen Record and Herald News on January 8, 2025. And sent to the R-Town. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk. May I have a roll call, please?
Committeewoman Arpichi. Committeewoman Artola?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Here.
Committeeman Truinsky?
Here.
Mayor Judge Crivello?
Here. Thank you. Mayor Stanford pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All righty. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending. Can we start off with any correspondence? Emery?
I have no correspondence.
Okay. Mr. Pinto?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have some things to bring this committee up to speed on. On January 27, I attended the American Legion Memorial Day Parade Committee meeting. The specific duties and responsibilities of the township and respective departments were clarified and discussed. In attendance was Committeewoman Jennifer Arpichi, our parade liaison. And of course, the biggest takeaway was we're really hoping to see some good weather and a large turnout this year. And one of the contingencies we made was the police department and OEM will make the final determination as to cancellation or not for obvious reasons. On January 29, I responded to a house fire on Becker Avenue and watched as our fire department did an amazing job at quickly knocking down heavy fire conditions that involved two vehicles, a vinyl fence, portions of a garage, and an extension into the home. Mayor Crivello, as you know, Mayor, you were there, and Deputy Mayor Tommy Miller also came to the scene and spoke with the homeowner, offering our support as a township, and the resident was very grateful. We've received eight applications and resumes so far for our tax assessor's position. I'm going to review them with our CFO. I'm sorry, for our taxes, yeah, for our taxes. I will review them with our CFO and tax collector and begin interviews in a very short amount of time because, again, Mr. Ty retires at the end of March. An update on our PSCNG efficiency grant program, the air conditioning units. Dave Brown was reached out to today by our vendors. The ambulance and firehouse will see installation within the coming weeks of this month. For the municipal building right now, the ETA for the RTUs is March of '25. Once that is done, we can look to finally have the roof replaced on this building. We've conducted an elevation of homes. I could call it grant. It's part two because we have the one grant out there already. This will be for a second round. We had a meeting on February 3 with six homeowners present. Tetra Tech, who was hired by the New Jersey Office of Emergency Management. It's their professional grant writer to introduce the FEMA Flood Mitigation Assistance Program to elevate those residents' homes. We've asked the residents to provide us with necessary paperwork. Once we have that paperwork, if there is interest, the state and Tetra Tech will submit for the grant on behalf of the township and will be again a sub-grantee. In attendance at that meeting was our RP, Rochelle Park Officer of Emergency Management Coordinator, Pete Donatello, Mayor Judge Crivello, and Committeewoman Artola. Update on our Brick Grant Pump Station. On the 31st, we had our FEMA Brick Grant Kickoff Meeting with, again, New Jersey Department of Officer Emergency Management, Boswell Engineering, our CFO, Mayor Judge Crivello, Committeeman Matt Truinsky was also in attendance. Our CFO will be working on procuring funding via a bond ordinance, trying to work out some particulars there so as not to threaten the benefit cost analysis that FEMA requires. Subsequent to that meeting on February 4, we met again with Boswell Engineering, where Dave Brown, the mayor, and Committeeman Truinsky once again came in, reviewed the plans, which are still being finalized. The NJDEP permitting is also being applied for at this time. 2223 Open Space Grant, that's improvements to Carlock Field. They have begun. I know we sent out some social media alerts. Residents were notified. The old shed will be removed. We worked with Sock around providing them some storage space inside Houghton Hall for now. There's an old office there. An outdoor pavilion will eventually be built. Synthetic bocciboil courts, spray misters will also be installed with new trees, landscaping, park benches, and trash receptacles around the complex. Contract, of course, was delayed by a week by public service. However, I was able to reach out to my contact at PS, what's normally a six-week wait time. We got down to one week. And this week, hopefully tomorrow or Friday, they will finally cut the wires leading to that so the shed can go. But again, it's all weather dependent. Unfortunately, the snow has slowed any construction down. And again, as a reminder, there's two open space grants that were being combined that'll offset the debt issued for that project. Update on our Green Communities Grant, the Community Forest Management Plan. We have letters of support for the committee. I know Michaela gave them to you folks tonight. It's just an updated letter. We made some language changes to better enhance the chances of us getting the grant based on the fact of some actions that I know are on the agenda for tonight in looking to go to a shade tree commission versus a committee. Hopefully, we'll receive that grant again, which will allow us to move forward with our CFMP, which is the Community Forest Management Plan. Recently, I was asked by the Division of Disaster Recovery and Mitigation, Environmental and Historic Preservation, Department of Community Affairs. It's a long title. To consult on a flood mitigation project to a home on Burden Street. I won't share the specific address at this time, but I'll do that with you private if you'd like. I will keep everyone informed as things progress and share what I learn about this program to see if we can help more residents. Since it's the first time I'm hearing about this option to help homeowners. And I will share what I know about our township's flooding issues with those at the DCA and those other departments listed so they know what our needs are here in Rochelle Park and that we're always looking to help our residents through grants. I know on the agenda, Mayor, there's a Climate Superfund Act. Recently, residents of Rochelle Park attended a Sustainable Bergen County Hub Meeting, and this item came up for discussion. It's basically a bill that'll be introduced would have fossil fuel companies pay into a super fund that municipalities get access to pay for damages from flooding and other climate disasters caused by our fossil fuel companies' actions. This will shift the burden from local towns to the large companies, refining companies in the state. The resolution of support offered tonight is one that TNEC has already passed and Hackensack and Fort Lee have it under consideration. Towns outside of Bergen County also passed a similar resolution in support. And Jersey City, Parsippany were some of the examples that were provided. I see no reason why we should not pass that resolution and support that endeavor. Couple more things, Mayor, I promise I'm done. Bergen County Open Space Grants, 2025 funding is open. What I've looked at and what I'm strongly considering applying for this year is, again, on the Municipal Park Improvement Program with the focus on repairing and adding to the playground area at Carlock Field. The playground surface at Carlock has been in need of some necessary repairs and/or replacement for some time now, as well as adding some additional features could be done. I know there's some concerns about some of the retaining walls. What I would like to do is have Colliers and I will reach out to Colliers Engineering, meet with their engineer, walk the park, kind of go over what some of our concerns are with Dave Brown, and as well as what's been provided to me by the Recreation Committee to go over those needs and then come up with a cost estimate and have Colliers assist in applying for that grant. I do, again, ask for this committee's input on this, and I know I will get it because the level of engagement, collaboration has been very high and it's been productive, as evidenced by my report of every endeavor that I've been a part of, somebody from the committee has been there. Resolution, you're going to see a walk-on for Howard Avenue that's for Boswell. That's the milling and paving portion from Patton Court to James Street. As you remember, we wanted the roadway to settle. We wanted to wait till spring. And this will finally complete that project once the few curbs and driveway aprons are addressed. This is not a final payment. This is only the fourth payment. And we will have those other lists of things that need to be done as already been addressed between Dave Boswell and La Force at construction. Again, the weather has kind of slowed that down. Once the snow stops, hopefully soon, they can get to that work. I know James Di Maria is here, so I will leave his suggestions and comments on the ordinance about outdoor dining to him. And I think that's all I have right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Thank you, Mr. Pinto. Anyone else have anything to say? We're going to offset our reports till the regular meeting. But if there's any other questions or concerns, I know we have some discussion that's going to be going on about the Climate Superfund Act, Open Space Grant. And I know we have the Fire Prevention and Shade Tree. So we're going to have some of that discussion during that period. So right now, any other, anybody else? Nope? Good? All right. So we're adding on these two walk-ons here that Mr. Pinto just said. And that is, one was the Howard Avenue one, which is 02574. This is a resolution that he was speaking about, Boswell Engineering for the Howard Avenue Project. And there's another resolution that would be added to the agenda. It's 025, I'm sorry, 025073. Authorization to approve the appointment of probationary firefighter. And that was Colin Cannon. That's on here also before we want to approve the agenda. So may I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeeman Truinsky?
Yes.
And Mayor Judge Crivello?
Yes. Okay, moving forward, we have discussion. Fire prevention. Sean?
Good evening. Heads on. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I was tasked with some data collection to request and fill in our vacant fire inspector position. I have all of my data for me. Give it to you all.
And Sean, I know you're on a roll, but if you'd like to sit at one of the tables, you can do that as well.
You can sit down. That's fine.
You're happy to stand. Perfect.
No, she's not here tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So within that packet, you'll find a whole slew of data, starting with the cover letter. Beyond that will be all of our periodic inspections. So that's everything we have completed initially for the year 2024. It's more of a visual aid. I don't expect anyone to read it. There will be no test later, I promise.
Thank you.
It's really just a visual aid to show how much work the Bureau has undertaken in the last year and how much really, in fact, just remains. Following that is all of our reinspection points. And then beyond that are all of our smoke detector and carbon monoxide certificates for resale of homes. To sum that all up, we did 298 periodic inspections last year, 223 yearly inspections, 136 changes of sale occupancies, with a total of 657 inspection points we completed last year. And that was with myself as a part-time inspector, Fire Official Demont, and Shelby Taylor as a part-time inspector. Beyond that, sorry, I lost my place here. And one more. There we go. So salaries for the 20-year, 2024 was a $17,000 fire official salary. Inspector Taylor grossed $22,687. Myself, $8,425. Technical assistant, Emery Wells, $5,182. And Peter Donatello Jr., $416. He's on payroll for emergencies only in case no one is available for response. That totaled $53,710 and a little bit of change left over. In our intake, our registration fees for 2024 was $27,140. Permit fees, $9,025. Our life hazard use rebate, so we get 65% as long as the fees are paid from the State Division of Fire Safety, $22,513.40 for a grand total of $58,678 and some change. So we have about $5,000 in wiggle room, give or take, for hiring another position. Beyond that, you'll find the personnel activity reports for the entire year. The, excuse me, the inspection numbers and permit numbers attended by each respective inspector, the totals, the average hourly, excuse me, the average weekly hours worked. And doing the math, the bottom number is the inspections per hour to maintain the exact same pace as last year. Each inspector, if it's just myself and Shelby, we have to do one inspection per every hour we work, which, in my opinion, professional opinion, is just not a feasible endeavor. It's ambitious, but it is not feasible. You'll find that for myself. For Darrell was in there as a reference point. The fire official is a very administratively intense role. That's from there just a visual aid to show that. You'll also find the percentage breakdown of each inspector and the percent of work they completed throughout the calendar year. I had completed approximately 35.5% and Shelby completed approximately 63.5% of the total workload for the year. That is with Darrell being the fire official and all of the administrative responsibilities falling onto him. Beyond that, I know it's a lot of numbers on a small page. Basically just compiles everything I just gave you into one page. I can email this to you if you'd like. Just to highlight a couple of data points. Right now, registration-wise, in our RMS database, we have 993 total registrations. And last year, as we can see, we didn't get to all of them. I would love to, but it's unfortunately staffing. You'll also see our invoices billed and our invoices collected and/or settled for penalties. There was a gap of about... Where am I here? I'm sorry. I lost my page. There was a gap of about $9,000 in registration fees not paid or not collected. And I believe it was $2,000 in permit fees, which is one of my goals for this year is I'd like to ensure the businesses are paying their respective fees. They're there to offset the cost of our operations as a department. In the back.
Sean, that's an administrative function more, collecting those on page.
That's an administrative function. Collecting, sending out late notices, making sure they're inputted into the computer. It's the fire official's responsibility. Beyond that, I talked a lot about responsibilities. You will find the 26 responsibilities listed for the fire official per the division. You will also find the eight responsibilities listed for the fire inspector. As if, giving a quick glance, the fire officials' responsibilities are incredibly administratively intense. I would love to go out and do inspections while working. I'm just, I haven't left the office since I've been appointed on January 23 because I'm so administratively bogged down. And I don't think it's fair or sustainable for Shelby to be out doing the entirety of the field work. It's going to burn her out. And it's just going to, ultimately, it's not a sustainable model. So I come into this position, I know it was a very recent appointment. I know it was very new for us all. I come with a business-first mindset. I want every business in town to succeed. I want them all to be here for years and to thrive in doing so. I also want them to be as safe as they possibly can. And just by the numbers I provide to you, we haven't gotten to about 180 inspections since 2020. That's as far back as I went. Ultimately because of staffing or part-time. Everything in town is, or everything in fire prevention is part-time. And there's just, there's really no workaround for it. The only way we can offset that is by staffing. Let me just make sure I hit all of my office points here. And that's pretty much it. Yeah, my position now is incredibly administratively intense. I can, I'll supplement in the field where I can on the next level of escalation if an inspector can, you know, gain progress with a business. But I need, basically, I need another staff member to offset the workload.
Thank you, Sean. So I have a couple of questions for you, please.
Absolutely.
And I knew, I will tell you in advance that I know quite a bit about fire inspections from my late husband telling me every day about different things. So you came here today from... I'm sorry. You came here today for, asking for a fire inspector.
Correct.
Now, maybe you can, you can tell the, there is here. There's permit fees.
Correct.
And then there's fines.
Yes.
The town gets which one?
The answer really is neither. The, all fees we intake go to the operations of the Fire Prevention Bureau. They go into a trust account.
Which one, which one are you saying?
Registration fees.
Okay.
So registration fees, permit fees, home resale fees all go into a fire prevention trust, and that's to offset our operation costs. In theory, if an inspector, the new hire, hopefully, works eight hours a week, that would take my hours and it would be a net zero across the board. I would like them to work more. If they can give me, you know, 12 to 16 hours a week, that would be able to accomplish a lot more in the course of, you know, the biweekly. I am working, I have sent it to town administrator, a couple of ordinance changes to try and intake a little bit more fees to offset any wages we may have.
The state reimburses, from what I understand, the state reimburses for salary and wages. They actually give a portion of what is put into the budget and it's part of an emergency portion that the state has to give for fire officials and inspectors.
Do that.
And that is for the salary and wage part of it.
Okay.
Usually, from what I understand, and maybe I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong. But I understand that the fines stay within the fire bureau.
Correct.
To be used to run any extra that you need.
Yes. So the fines, so any penalties we issue, there's dedicated and dedicated penalties. So the Fire Prevention Bureau retains 50% of the penalty, and that's for, it has to be used for the advancement of the Bureau. So really, it can't be used to offset salary or wages.
It cannot. Because you're funded by the state. We have to get that. When it's sitting on the budget, when you're looking on the budget, I think it's something like $48,000. And the state, or $51,000. The state came in and gave $48,000. So that little bit would then be required by the taxes or on the budget.
Correct.
That is, you have to kind of wipe one off with the other.
Yeah.
The state is actually giving each municipality a certain amount for your services, its protection services, okay? I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
I learned something new today.
You can ask, you know, you can ask the CFO if you'd be curious about it. But I'm always under the impression, and then you had it from the budget that I saw, it was, you know, $15,000 in extra costs, right? So what I understand is that, that you have a fund, which I think I would like to know. What did you say was in that fund? That would be for the penalty? How much is in that?
There's two, technically, there's three accounts. There's our general fund, which is all of our registration and permitting fees, and the life hazard use rebates. There's our 212A, which is our penalty account for fire prevention. That's for the advancement of the Bureau. If we want to make a capital purchase of upgrading a vehicle or the fire department needs a vehicle upgraded, it's for use for fire safety education materials, things such as that.
That comes out of the?
Fire prevention's penalty money.
Penalties.
Fire department retains half of the penalties, and they're free to use that for equipment, training.
The fire department?
The fire department will get half as well.
Gets half of your penalties.
So say, arguments say hypothetically, we issue a $1,000 penalty. 500 goes to the Fire Prevention Bureau for advancement of education and such, and the half goes to the fire department for training and equipment.
All right. I mean, I looked at the budget, and I do see that, and a lot of towns have this, Sean, and I don't know how you implement it or how you're going to implement it here. But it does give fire inspectors a certain amount of hours that they can, or cannot work a week. So up to 15 hours, up to 20 hours. Because you're looking, from what I understand, at a salary position here.
No, I would be hourly.
I'm sorry, hourly. I'm sorry, your salary.
Hourly.
Hourly, which is between $20 and $25, depending on the experience, from what I'm understanding, right?
Correct.
So there are municipalities that say, well, you can have, you know, three fire inspectors, but no more than 10 or 15 hours a week. Because you want to look at what you can keep in your budget and basically what it is, from what I'm saying, and it's my opinion, what the state is giving us for reimbursing your salary and wages. We want to try to, if possible, stay within that realm.
Of course.
And then the extra money that you get for the fines, right? That would be used to help?
The fees we pull in can be used. Yeah, the fines are.
The fines you keep.
The fines we keep, and that's for?
The fees come to the town.
The fees come to us, and then that can be used to offset any, you know, deficits and salary.
They can be. But the fines you can also use.
Fines we cannot.
You can use fines for fire-related and for stuff that you need there.
For, yes, for equipment and stuff. We can't use them for wages.
Equipment, education, you just said it.
Yeah, yeah, we can't use fines for wages, is what I'm saying.
You can, no, you can't use it for salary.
We cannot use them for salary.
So we're understanding you.
Yes, yeah, I want to make sure we're on the same. Fines are strictly for, like, capital.
Were you actually thinking of doing anything that would be, you know, up to 10, 15 hours a week? Or are you looking at anything like that?
I would like him, he or she, whoever it is, in a minimum of eight. That would offset the hours I work, and that would be able to maintain the pace of last.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, eight?
Eight, minimum of eight.
Eight per week?
Per week, that's what I worked and that would be able to keep the same paces last year. We, they hopefully have daytime availability, so it's a little easier to flow from business to business. So they may be able to get a couple of more things accomplished. But if I can squeeze 12 to 16 out of them, that would be fantastic.
And keep it within the salary.
And keep it within salary, that's the key right there.
We have to look at our budget too, right? We have to look what the state's giving you also.
Exactly.
So, I mean, this is something I don't know if you want to consider. And this, again, is my opinion, this would be something that I know other towns do. They keep a certain amount, they say, okay, this one can work, you can work 10 hours, you can work 20. Because I see the difference you have here in the salaries. I see that Ms. Taylor has $22,000.
Yes, that was prior to my regime, if that's the right word to use.
I'm not, I'm not factoring this, but I'm looking what you gave me as information, right?
Correct.
So you have Ms. Shelby Taylor at, you know, $22,000.
Yes, she would work approximately 16 hours a week.
She did 16 hours a week. And then you were a lot less.
I was a lot, I was less in wages and less in hours worked as well.
Right, but you did eight and yet you're telling me that even with the eight that you did and Ms. Taylor doing it, you were not able to complete last year's inspection?
We got everything we needed to complete for the state done, but there's a hand, there's about 180 properties we haven't been to in about four years.
Is it supposed to be inspected within so many years?
In a perfect world, we're supposed to get to everything every year, but the state minimums are, life hazards have to be completed.
Well, definitely life hazards, we understand that.
That's the minimum. I would love to get to everything every year. That's, that's the, it's an ambitious goal, but I think it's doable. If there's three people on the staff, it's doable.
Well, you know, I know I looked at the salary. I looked at the, I'm sorry, I looked at the budget with the salary and the wages that the state gives us for that. I did look at that. I did look at the difference you had last year to here. I know that you are taking over this position at the salary that was stated last year. And, you know, anybody else have any questions for Sean?
Not this time, it's a lot of information. I thank you for putting it all together.
Of course.
I'd like to review it.
Absolutely.
Can take a little time.
Yeah, it's still a lot.
Nothing from me, Mayor. Thanks so much for being here.
Of course.
So I guess, Mr. Pinto, what are we going to be doing on this one next? You're gonna, do we make a, want to vote? What are we going to do on this one now?
I don't want to force Mr. Trwinski's hand, because I know he says there's a lot to review, but yeah, if we could get a resolution on it, at least allow us to look into the position. And, you know, we've already advertised. We've already advertised.
You have started to advertise, okay. And the salary that you're advertising is at 20 to 25?
Yes, depending on experience, correct.
And, I mean, we could, we could do a resolution on that. Could we do a resolution on that?
So you're looking for, to hire or just to conduct interviews?
No, just to conduct, so we would just conduct interviews at this time, because we have no specific candidates. I don't think we need a resolution.
No, you could just have a motion to authorize the interviewing of whatever candidates have applied. You don't need to do the resume, you can just have a motion.
How about that? You can do that now? Yes?
Do it now.
Sure. All right, so can I have a motion to authorize to have interviews for this position?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Committeewoman Otola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeeman Trwinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Judge Cibellino?
Thank you, yes. Thank you, Sean.
You're very welcome.
All right, we'll go further from here. Thanks so much. And this is a lot, this is a lot, great work.
Before Sean leaves, do you want to talk a little bit about the fee schedule that you?
Yes, I was looking, I know I was.
Sorry. You're making a rapid getaway.
I don't.
No, no, you can't leave it.
I don't have that paperwork with me, but I have been in talks with town administrator of possibly revisiting our fee structure. It hasn't been updated in approximately 10 years and it's due. It would be a relatively nominal fee, basically everything would bump by about $15.
So, Sean, you looked at other towns?
Yes.
And you did a comparison?
Mm-hmm.
In that other town comparison, did you see a bump up of $15?
Approximately, yeah. There's, we're very comparable as we currently are with Maywood. Saddle Brook is about $30 to $40 more. I think Carlstadt was the other one I looked at. They were about that $80 to $100 range. Basically, everything's falling from 75 to $125.
And you had Midland Park.
Midland Park as well.
Right.
They're, again, about 85, I think their number was, off the top of my head. We're due for a fee raise, it's been 10 years. And again, those fees are only going to offset the cost of operating the department. So the more money I can generate, and I don't believe it's a burden to local businesses. I don't think $15, break it down over the cost of a year is an extra dollar and change a month. Basically, we would go from 70 to 85 and whatever the progressive steps are.
Yes, you can, the information, it was forwarded to my office.
I believe, I believe Dean did, yes, sir.
Yes, so if the council wishes, I can put it in an ordinance form and then you can decide whether you, you know, the ordinance as prepared is enough, you want to make it less or more, but at least you'll have the document in front of you and you can make a decision. If that's how you'd like to push it.
Yeah, that would be fine, I think that everybody can review that. Maybe we can get it sooner and then, you know, by the 26th probably, the next meeting, we could give you an idea.
Sounds good.
If that's, and then actually, probably both with the interviews and.
Perfect.
And with the fees that you want to increase. But thank you, Sean, I appreciate everything.
Perfect.
Anything else before you leave?
I think I'm good. I want to ask for other questions.
All right.
Did pretty well.
You're great.
I like your show.
Thank you. All right, so here we go, Shade Tree Commission. Oh, there's Michael, how are you? Don't mind.
We're gonna sit.
Sure, sure.
We're not gonna stay long, we're gonna sit.
So I just want to say this discussion is about, we're introducing an ordinance here. That's 1218-25, which is an ordinance to establish a Shade Tree Commission, because we already have a Shade Tree Committee. So I asked if you could come and give us a little bit.
Hi. Hello, Mayor, how are you?
As well, thank you.
Township Committee, I'm Michael Warren. I'm on the Shade Tree Committee and the chairperson. And this is Liz Stewart, she's the town arborist. So, you know, we know on the docket tonight, you'll hopefully be moving forward with the Shade Tree Commission. We thought it was like in the best interest of the public to just come and maybe talk a little bit about the grant. I know Dave, myself, Dean and Liz, mainly Liz, worked very hard on doing the, all the paperwork. And I thought maybe the public would like to know exactly what that grant is for and how it might be utilized and, you know, how being a commission might help get us that grant to begin restoring the Shade Tree canopy. And then, obviously, if anyone had any questions, Liz is really just a super duper expert on all things Shade Tree Commission. She came to our Shade Tree meeting last month in January. So we thought this would be just a nice time in the public view, just to kind of get some information about those things. So where do you want to start?
Go ahead, you want to start?
Want to start with the grant?
Sure.
All right.
So you're applying for a grant, hi, I'm Liz Stewart, arborist, certified arborist. You're applying for a grant for a community forestry management plan. And this would be your first plan, which is a five-year plan with the state of New Jersey, the urban forestry. And it's basically your plan, your tree plan, every five years you would renew that. So this is your first one, which is exciting. What that does is once you have that plan set, every year you put in an annual accomplishment report. And what that does overall is it can get you grants. You know, it gives you money, it says that you're committed to a program and it can bring in money. The other part of the grant is a tree inventory. And they're requiring a tree inventory be done in some way or form to have a management plan and to get grants. So it could be as little as this one section of town, we just kind of looked at it and there are this many hazardous trees and we're going to take care of them. Or it can be a full street and town inventory. So you can do anything that works for you, but there is a grant for $15,000 to help you just get a street tree inventory, which would cover your entire town. So it's worth looking into.
Thank you. You know, we want to make sure also that, that the members of the committee up there and the public know the difference between the Shade Tree Committee and the Commission. We really want to stress that in any of these types of commissions, it's a collaborative effort. You know, I know that when people get a little hung up on, well, who's really in charge of planting the trees? It's strictly collaborative. There's, you know, there's no one person to dictate to Dave Brown and his crew, you better plant this tree right here or else. You know, Dave's a part of the committee, you know, he missed our last meeting, he was just under the weather. But, you know, Dave's a part of the committee, he'll come to the meetings. I think it'll really streamline our communication. Last year, the communication was a little bumpy, we didn't have meetings, we didn't really have any kind of direction. But we're hoping that with the monthly meetings, you know, the communication between the DPW, the township committee and the volunteers of the Shade Tree Commission really begins to, you know, move forward in a positive direction. Anything else about the, you guys have any questions? I don't know, it's like, just want to make sure everyone gets to say what they have to say. I have a, yeah, I have a question. Liz, I know you were part of the River Edge Shade Tree Commission and I recall reading that you helped bring in $66,000 worth of tree planting grants in 2022, if I have that correct?
That, yeah, that's correct, as a commission, we wrote our own grants to you, me and another girl on there, because we had the experience, but a grant writer can do that. We also brought in $135,000 for a grant for Trees for Schools the following year, because we looked out for that. And I actually sat, I guess it's a conflict, I sat on the, on the committee that approved the grants and we really looked for, we were looking for who had good groups and there was only a certain amount of money to give out. And if someone had a commission over a committee, they would get picked over someone else maybe too. So it can bump you up, not for every grant. If there's enough money for everyone, you're going to get a grant no matter what you have. But yeah, you can bring in, you can bring in some good money with having a good tree plan and a management plan.
Great.
Yeah.
And Liz, what core principles have you observed that make Shade Tree Commissions both effective and sustainable?
You know, honestly, I've seen both committees and commissions do good work. You know, I think legally though, under state statute, you do get additional liability protection.
Immunity.
Immunity. And it's, you know, there is the Torres Claims Act that also gives you it, but this immunity under a Shade Tree Commission specifically gives you heightened immunity in case of, you know, for liability. And if you see any of your insurance forms come through, they'll ask you specifically, was it a dead tree? Was it reported? Do you have a Shade Tree Commission? Yes or no? If they see yes, they almost will take that and just put it in a different category and say, okay, you're, you're good. If you don't have a commission, you could be more liable, you know, you're in a different category. So it gives you a bump up, is that, yeah, that's how I read them. And it also gives just a commitment to your program and it gives a commitment to the volunteers and to the DPW and everyone can support each other in theory. You know, as long as everyone's talking and building a good, it's about the program that you have and the people involved, it works great. The committees I know of do really good work, but they have no, they don't have a foundation. They don't have, they don't always have people like standing up behind them and since they're not a commission, they can't do that much. They may not take minutes, they don't really get a budget, they're not taken seriously. They're like the last on the list for everything. And, you know, these are your community members. So you want to give them as much support and as a commission, you're giving them that support to do the best that they can. I've never seen a commission overtake their powers. You know, like, I've never seen them say, we're the commission and we're going to make ordinances and we're going to do this. I've never, ever seen that.
I have to say, the difference between this year and last year, I have to echo Mr. Pinto, the level of engagement from this current township committee, I think is going to be a driving force. The liaison is the deputy mayor and he is actively sending me things to look at and vice versa when it comes to these, these types of topics. Again, you know, we're just town volunteers, I'm not a, I'm a tree expert, you know, that's why I call Liz and Liz has been great. So, you know, we're finding our feet, we're hopefully going to have some Arbor Day stuff coming up. And, but, you know, I also signed up for the core training. So I'm all set to take that class, it's a five-week class, I'm still looking forward to it. Can't wait. But it's essential, yes. I know, I'm doing it, I'm doing it, I'm going to love every second of it. So, I mean, you know, we appreciate you guys reconsidering this again. Most of you up there know this is something I've been passionate about. Just this past weekend, we had that snow and one of our neighbors came to fix our spark plug on our snow blower. I made a video about it, it was taken down, you may have seen it, you may not have seen it. But they came and he's a walker in town, I see him walking his dog. He lives up on West Olest near Rochelle Ave. So I asked him, I said, oh, hey, he didn't know who I was, shockingly. And he said, I said to him, hey, I see you walking all the time. What's one thing that we could do to really make walking better in Rochelle Park? He said, plant some damn trees. So I asked him why he, why he said that. And he said, he walks, it's hot, there's no shade cover, there's no beautification, it doesn't, you know, he wants clean air, he wants less water on our, on our streets. All the things that you guys all know I've been talking about for a very long time up here. So, but that was his number one answer. And, you know, very nice man and just reminded me that, you know, we have some good to do as a group, all of us. And, you know, I want to see the park return to Rochelle Park time, so.
Go ahead.
I have a question. I would assume the Shade Tree Commission would interact also if there was any new developments coming into town? Any projects, redeveloped?
I believe, and I'll check with, I don't know if the attorney has an answer for you on that.
What was the question?
I know the Shade Tree Commission can, as well as the, we also have an environmental commission, which I'm also on. I know in some towns, they combine the two and the same people who are on the Shade Tree Commission are also on the environmental commission. But I believe they do, the environmental commission chair has a seat on the land use board, that's a voting member. And I also know the Shade Tree Commission also gets involved in new projects coming into town.
You can do that.
Either one of you want to elaborate on that?
I haven't seen, because I know that was raised as to whether they can be combined. I don't, the statute, I haven't seen anything in the statutes that allow both to just be one Shade Tree. There's two separate statutes and of course, you can have the same people on both.
That's what, yes.
But they're two separate entities and they would have to be maintained that way, if that's the direction.
Thank you for clarifying, yes, it's the same members but different committees. Right. And commissions, right. So, and they would have a.
As far as development, it's hard to say, because Shade Tree Commission is exclusively public trees, right? Environmental, so it would be how you set that up, really. But they would have maybe advise, you know, maybe advise on a, on a private construction or on a project. Maybe you'd have someone sitting from environmental, but Shade Tree Commission is exclusively really public trees as far as the state statute goes?
I believe the environmental deals a lot more with. I'm sorry?
Like the plans and things like that.
Well, they do, bush, shrubs and all the other stuff, but I think sitting on the Board of Land Use, they would also have to say and say, something should come forward with a new building or a new construction or something, if I correct that.
Yes.
Right? So, you know, this, this is, this is where a little bit of a difference comes and I think that's why it has to be divided, right? And I know people have said, well, can we put it together? I didn't know either until, you know, I researched it and sort of it. Because we've had the environmental commission here for many, many years. Unfortunately, from what I know of, I don't know if previous people know, but it wasn't used. I don't know how many years. So we've had it on the books. In other words, it's been an ordinance for a while. So this would be something that we're introducing as a new ordinance. And I don't think anything, and this is my opinion, I have no problem with having something nice for an environment, right? I grew up here, I remember a lot of trees. But as long as that's a real sidewalk, right? We're going to have to look at all that and make sure that nobody has trouble using, problems or stuff. I know it was brought up about, you know, budgetary, right? How do we work this budgetary? Well, we have to look at all the grants that you can get also, correct? So, you know, Mr. Miller said 66,000?
66,000.
66,000.
But then Liz went on to say that they also got $135,000 even.
Yeah, that's a lot.
That's a lot of money.
How many, how many?
For trees, it's amazing.
In one year, or how long?
The Trees for Schools grant was 135. They were able to get a watering tank with that and do some tree work also and get sprinklers put in. So that, that grant was a little different than the usual tree planting grants. For a tree planting grant, the most recent one I got was Engelwood, was about $50,000. That's like 100 trees, you know? And you have a much smaller town, that's like a bigger city. I'd say a town like Oradell might be a little more similar. They do a tree planting every year. They budget maybe 30,000, hohocus similar to, and plant maybe like 50 or 60 trees a year, which is, you know, you could do that or you can just make it into all your projects, you do a lot of street projects.
Correct.
And just say, we're going to budget it into that street project and that's how we're going to start it.
That's what I started.
Yeah, but you should have a tree planting line, even if it's minimal, but you want to get something regular started.
I know Dave is sweating over there. Dave, we're not planting $135,000 worth of trees. We were very conservative in the grants for the tree management plan. I think, Dave, we were all in agreement, you know, we're going to start small because, you know, we are a small town and the DPW force, you know, does have other things going on. And, but we were very conservative with the number that we expect to plan each year with hopes that we can go above it maybe or we just maintain that number. But it's a start, it's a, it's something we can leave to the future generations here in town, all right? Like, I'm always concerned about what this town will look like in 30 years. Well, who will inherit this? Something to inherit, you know, I won't be around forever, people in this room will be around forever, but who's going to carry that on? I think it's very important to have some type of legacy in Rochelle Park for people to take on as new people move into town.
Ms. Otola? Yes, so one of the things you said about having a commission is that it, if you could expand on this, helps towns to take it more seriously? Yeah, so we've been taking trees seriously for years. I mean, we had, you got PSCNG to donate trees at no cost to us for Oldest Street and that was a lot of trees.
Correct.
We've been adding them to our paving projects. Some of the bigger trees that are unsafe have to be taken down, we replace them. We've also, years before that, we were offering residents trees. We were trying to come up with a plan to have people point, plant the trees on their property rather than on the curb, because it was kicking up sidewalks and we've had residents who signed up for such a thing. So we've been taking trees seriously. That is not an issue in town.
I think, I've been involved in town, with the town for maybe seven years, something, as a consultant, like, kind of on the side. Like, sometimes I'm a little bit more involved in it, but I think because you have a good DPW crew that knows trees a little bit more than some other towns. Yes, I think you try to keep up as best you can, but having a commission, you have a dedicated group that is their job almost and their commitment and their passion, it's like they're the heart behind it, the program. So then you have like this heart behind the program that's really promoting and educating residents about it. Because I see with some of your street programs, you got a lot of pushback. When you took down all those trees for a street, you go around and people like, well, I don't want another tree because it was this problem and there's no education and there's no one behind that. You know, like, who's going to be promoting that? You have someone doing a job that has other commitments, you have people in the, you know, in the administration or somewhere, they have other things going on. This is a dedicated group for trees. That is what they do.
Right, but so is the committee, so I'm not clear on the difference.
Can I jump in here?
Can I jump in too? Can I jump in too? Please.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I think Mr. Warren said it at the beginning, that how many times did the Shade Tree Committee meet last year?
None.
How many times did the Shade Tree Committee liaison reach out to you to inquire about meetings or orchestrate meetings?
None.
So I think that's what they're referring to, to the lack of seriousness about resin voice and how our town looks.
I see that often with other committees too, they get forgotten. The committees get forgotten is like their side thing. They don't have to keep minutes strictly, they don't have to keep track of their budget, really, they don't really get a budget. You might do that differently, but you're here now, you might not always be here, and someone else who comes along might be like, well, they're just a committee goodbye. But they don't get as much, if you're a commission, you have rules. You have certain rules and you have commitments, and it's a little bit of a higher thing.
Correct. I mean, we have a recreation committee, and they do take minutes, and they put on a lot of events during the year.
Because someone is doing it, but they don't have to, right? So, but if you have a commission, they need to be doing that. There's, they have to be following a certain protocol, and they, and they want to do it. So it's not guaranteed. You're right, like, you could have either group and make either group.
Yeah, we have a lot of committees in town, and they're very effective. So for you to say that it's not effective, I'm just not understanding, because we have a lot.
It's, from what I see, it's not as effective. If I see an environmental commission who's running the trees, they're not as committed to trees. If I see a Shade Tree Commission, they are very dedicated, they know what their job is, Shade Tree Commission. If I see a Shade Tree Committee, there's always a feeling of like not really being respected or heard as much. But they can, you can get a lot done. It depends on, it depends on the group, really. But you have a group asking for this, and they're ready to help you and to promote you what you want to see and what they want to see as residents. And I see like you have a good group, you have a great DPW that's doing their job, you know, you do do good work, you have an administration that backs it up to a certain extent. So, you know, you can do what your town needs, really. I'm just here giving you what I see from other groups.
Okay, thank you.
But it's great that you're doing that, yeah. You're ready for the next.
Wait, wait, there's more. Go ahead.
There's a question more for Mr. Scatino. Section 7, it's not a concern, it's again a question. I just want to make sure that that's in line with the new tree ordinance that we passed last year. I don't want to diminish any penalties that were required under that ordinance last year. And if anything, maybe change the section 7 to match that, because I think we have some more, a little more strict powers when people remove trees without permission. I just want to make sure that they're in line, that's all.
Yeah, I didn't see that ordinance. I can't answer whether it is or it isn't. But that should be looked into before this is adopted. And if there's going to be significant changes, then we should hold off introducing this until the next meeting, because then you're gonna have to re-adaptize.
Dave, I don't know if you got a chance to look at this, but I think the new ordinance actually has more teeth, and why not give the commission the teeth that that ordinance has? Or at least bring them in line together.
Yeah, I didn't read it. It almost looks, I mean, honestly, the state statute is gonna override anything you put, right? So it looks like you mimic the state statute, right?
Yes, they tried to, yes.
Which is great, because it's very basic, it gives you leeway, and as long as you follow that, which section are you looking in?
Section 7.
Oh, yeah. So that's, so basically, if someone damages a tree, you're gonna, you're gonna make them pay for the value of the tree, plus any penalties on top of that. So if it's like a big 17-inch oak, that could be worth like $25,000. Yeah, that actually reads.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Let me just clarify that, Mr. Pinto, you're talking about where Dave had to go and check the trees before they were taken down. Is that the one you're talking about?
No, I'm sorry, if someone damages a tree or tampers.
Right, Dave had to go out and inspect it, because that was the DEP that came and said, okay, this is new, the state says you have to do it. That's the one you're talking about?
Correct.
But this is the state statute, that would be, is that what you're worried about?
Just want to make sure that they're giving the commission as much teeth as that ordinance that we passed last year.
So, yeah, so the state statute, just to set it up your commission, that one is for your stormwater regulation.
Okay.
Right, right.
Yeah, so it's a little different, that's for private.
That's right, because we have a stormwater.
Perfect, that's why I was the question.
So this is public, and that's private and public, and.
So we're okay with this as far as it's concerned, because I didn't know that was under the stormwater, that's why I was saying, wait a minute, why were you asking that? So we had to put it under, because the DEP came and said we had to do this, and then we had to create that, right?
Correct.
Okay, we're good. Okay. Mr. Chorinsky, did you have something?
Yeah, so I appreciate everything that's been said so far, and I realize that in the moment in time that we are right now, right? All the intentions are perfect, right? We have Dave Brown, who's superior at working with, together with the tree. But if something should happen and our time goes on, and you're no longer on the commission, maybe Dave is, you know, in Hawaii on retirement, and, you know, whoever's here, if we're not getting along and we're not talking to each other, is there any oversight at that point? Do we have oversight on that?
You can abolish.
Or the town council?
We can abolish it. At any time, if the committee decides that they want to abolish that ordinance or change anything to the ordinance, you can bring that up and bring it forward. You're allowed to do that, yeah?
Okay. And again, from a logistical concern, you know, being a licensed plumber and doing a lot of mechanical work, one of the biggest offenders of, everybody knows, one of the biggest offenders of utilities are de-proceeding roots. And Mrs. Bonif is brought up a great system for containing roots on trees. But again, having, as long as everybody is working together and collaborating, it's, you know, it's not a problem. But I've seen the other, I've seen the other side of that, you know, beyond the work end, and, you know, and just, just want to make sure that we have the ability to undo something that has been done, or have some oversight.
You guys always have the power to do that, so.
We've changed that a few times on different ordinance, it says add, intake, and deleted, which is, we have one in here that's taking out for the EMS building. We can do that, we do have the power. And we never want to see that not to see, because I really believe.
We all have a shared interest in our canopy, so we should definitely be making every effort to, to restore that, you know, in a responsible manner, especially for the size of our town, our workforce, and of course, our budget. So, you know, there's no, you know, no one is being unrealistic about what we are expecting to try to accomplish. So I do appreciate your time for that.
I mean, I see that, I even know it's a five-member, two-alternate on the commission, that's what I have here.
Okay.
So it's five-member, two-alternate, that, actually, my friend, Mr. Scatino, just, you know, looked at and made sure we had that right. And this is a volunteer position that would, you know, be looking at. Thank you for volunteering for all of this.
No, you're welcome.
Because, you know, it seems like we have a lot of volunteers that are really putting all into everything.
We have a lot of great volunteers in this town.
We really do. And, you know, actually, I have a person from out of town that said, you need me to water something during this?
Yes, tell them yes.
And I said, okay, all right, but.
Give them my number.
You know, with Dave putting their bags around the trees and stuff like that to make sure they start to grow, these are little things that I think you had asked some of the residents if they put water in it last year, you know, to help out a little, so maybe the residents can, which is, which is great, because that's volunteering at times. Yeah. I don't, I, I mean, if anybody, anybody else has any questions, we can vote on it going forward here. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for doing it in Rochelle Park.
Don't go far, Michael.
Don't go far, Michael.
One more thing, Dean, don't go far, okay. I just wanted to say thanks for bringing up that climate superfund act.
That's why I don't want you to go too far.
Yes, please.
That's next on discussion.
Okay. I'm in trouble. No, no, you don't have to come, you can sit there, but I'm just saying I'll leave that.
So can you talk a little bit about the climate superfund act?
Well, so a member of Team Rochelle Park, Sam, I call him French Sam, he's come to a couple of meetings, but he is knee-deep, no pun intended, in the flooding issue, you know, from Sprout Brook up to the Saddle River. We have been meeting with Assemblywoman Swain, Mr. Tully. We have been going to a lot of other towns, Team Rochelle Park-type of organizations, and making connections, trying to get some movement, obviously, on a county-wide effort to help alleviate or mitigate the flooding issues, right? It's just a small task. But at one of the events that Sam went to, they brought up this climate superfund act, and he sent it to me and asked if I can somehow get it to the township committee. So I emailed Mr. Pinto and the mayor with a copy of it, just saying, hey, you know, here's some, here's some information behind it, who's signed on to support it. I guess it's making its way through the legislature and the different committees, where it would work very much like the superfund act, where, you know, policing companies would have to commit money to a fund to help towns clean up messes from contaminated places. And this one would be more attached to climate action from fossil fuel companies. Mr. Pinto, do you want to elaborate anymore?
I think you covered it all. I mean, honestly, that's what it does. That handout that you provided, the one-pager was provided to each committee person as well.
Okay, great. No, we just thought if you guys would just support it, what the heck, you never know.
I mean, we are a flooding community, and if we can.
Yes, we are.
I think New York got three million, three billion dollars.
I don't remember the exact amount, but they got some money in it, you know, if we could get some, and that could help the town anyway, that's the purpose of the organization.
Did you want to say?
Yeah, I was just, thanks so much for bringing this to us, and I was reading up on it. So if I understand it correctly, it's almost like if there were large refineries in North Jersey, for example, they might have to pay fees based on their emissions, and those fees go to a state climate fund. And so if we do pass a resolution, we could then apply for those funds for local flood projects. So I think it's a no-brainer, and I think we should do it.
It's worth a shot, especially, I know in Rochelle Park, we have a long history, and we could definitely demonstrate to the state the need that this town has for help. So keep our fingers crossed.
Well, I very much appreciate you bringing it up.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you so much. And we're gonna check into it.
All right.
Anybody else have a question for Mr. Warren before I go? No, please don't.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the open space grant, and I believe, Mr. Pinto, you had said this is about.
Yeah, I covered most of this, mayor, in my administrator's report, and talking about, again, it's time to apply for an open space grant. We've seen anywhere between $140,000 to $197,000 given to us via those grants. I alternated between Carlock and Matthews Field, and we all know of the Matthews Field project was funded, you know, with last year. So this year, I'd like to do, go back to Carlock. And again, I'll bring in the assistance of our engineer from Colliers and walk the park with Dave Brown. I've, as I said, I have a laundry list of items from the recreation committee that they want to see addressed, and if we can build it in, I'll come up with a scope of work and, you know, a cost estimate. I'll bring it back before this committee to, you know, give me a resolution allowing me to make that application.
I believe that application is due by March.
March, yeah.
Okay.
The intent, you have to file an intent that we want to file for that.
But, so we have a little time, and I know there was, it has been brought up, at least to my attention, that there's a problem with the turf, there's some kind of tear, I'm sorry, by the playground with the.
Yeah, so the playground area is that rubberized material. We've gotten estimates anywhere between $160,000 to $220,000 to replace it. Even the buckets that Dave could buy to make spot repairs is crazy priced, and that's through state contract. And, you know, it's probably time to look at that. And again, we just left the meeting, and, you know, that's one of the things that comes up in those reports from our joint insurance fund, as, hey, you need to look at these playground areas.
Well, we did, and as a matter of fact, if somebody, God forbid, had gotten hurt or can get hurt, we have to address these things. We do not want anybody, first of all, getting hurt or any lawsuits that would come from it. So this is something we need to look into. Anything else that you want to bring up about it?
And if, again, you know, if there's a member of this committee that has some ideas, or even the public, something you'd like to see down at Carlock Field, let me know, shoot me an email, give me a call. We can absolutely, when we do the walkthrough with Colliers, you know, look to see what we can do.
We also have a project going there, right, at Carlock Field, we're also doing that too.
That's the current one, correct, from two years ago, that open space project, and that's, again, the pavilion, the Potchibo Court, the Spray Park. And it was removal of some large trees, but just because of their new ordinance, there'll be replacement of a lot of new shrubs and trees. It's gonna clean it up a lot. Some park benches, trash receptacles, that's also included in this project.
That's great, thank you. All right, Colliers Engineering, everyone, hi.
How are you, Mayor?
A perfect segue, from open space grants to Colliers.
Just hand it right off.
There it is.
Perfect. So, speaking about the open space grants, we deal with them all the time, especially with Bergen County. The letter of intent is the first part of everything, and then you get into the nuts and bolts of it. So, you know, as long as the weather holds off, I'm thinking maybe next week, we get together, walk it, and come up with a priority list of what could go in for the grant application, and set it based off of severity, and then also dollars as well. Because with it, 150 is probably about the sweet spot that that grant comes in at. If you want to team it up with some other types of grants, we can do that too. We'll just talk about it and see what's out there. And then we're getting to understand everything about your town, major flooding, we understand, I must have heard it about 15 times tonight, and that's only in the past hour. So, yeah, we're aware of it, and we can help out with all your flooding needs. It's a process, it really is a process, and you have to start and hit it hard. The CRS program, Community Rating System, is a good program to be in for the residents with the flood insurance. I've had many communities where I've come into town personally, where they have not been a part of that. We've signed them up for it, and then years later, they're going from a community rating of 10, which is a 0% savings, to down to about a 7 or a 6, where you're saving about 20, 25% on your flood insurance. And a lot of it goes with the requirements through the state for the DEP tier A stormwater permit. You could use those requirements that you have to do for that, and it counts for your education and everything else for your CRS program. So we'll go through that with Dean and the rest of the team to see what we could do to help out, and how it can help the community. And then we'll start talking about your paving programs, and what we're looking at to do for the, really, the summer and the fall. I, what I envision is start putting together the plans for whatever you're looking to build this year and pave this year, within the next couple of months. Maybe have some information on for the next couple agendas for design, and so we can move forward with that. But I just want to, you know, meet with Dean and go over the different items with the DPW as well, work off your priority list, work off your budgets that you have appropriated, or what you're looking to appropriate, and take it and run from there.
Okay. I'm sorry, you're from Colliers.
Yes.
Could you tell everybody your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. My name is Carl O'Brien.
Carl Ryan, so this is our new engineering.
Yes, so I am, it's myself, and then there's another gentleman that, he's not here tonight. His name is Ken DeGennaro. Ken will be the primary point of contact on the day-to-day items. I am here as well. Ken reports up to me. I handle all of North Jersey and Lower New York, so all those different engineers report up to me. And one of the beauties about Rochelle Park, for me personally, is I live very, very close, and I actually shop right at that ShopRite.
Yeah.
Who doesn't?
That's a common meeting.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a, it's a good thing. So, you know, we're here to help, and we just want to make sure that every day that we're here is just one day better than what it was prior. I know you've had some concerns and issues throughout the years with a few things, that's why we're here, to tell you the truth. And, you know, what we were looking to do is just help you guys out in any way possible.
Well, appreciate that. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
No, Carl, and I've been in touch, as well as Ken and I, so.
Yeah. And then with the building department, we're going to be working with the building department on some flood reviews with that as well. We'll establish a program on how we'll do those reviews, what's the important things that we need.
I'm sorry, for what review?
Flood.
Flood review?
Flood view, yeah. So if a home is in a flood zone, what we're looking to do to help make sure that the home is better protected.
Okay.
So that there is not an issue with, you know, they build a new house, and next thing you know, it's flooding again. So, and that actually goes into your CRS program and your stormwater management. So it's all, it's all tied together.
Yeah, James is very familiar with our CRS program. I think, are we six now or five?
Five.
Or seven?
Seven, yeah.
Can you cover up for a reevaluation?
Yes.
That's great. If you, if you guys are already a seven, you're way ahead of the norm. I was at the flood convention conference in October, and the majority of New Jersey that actually participates, they max out at about an eight. So for you to be a seven looking to go six, you're well ahead of the curve. So kudos to you.
Yeah, we were awarded this year for outstanding...
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
You don't...
Our town has done a lot for this.
You actually don't hear that.
...sat in on these meetings, and it's, it's very intensive to go through all those points.
Oh, definitely.
And the point system.
The reevaluation that's coming up is a five-year program, and it's a very intense, in-depth look, and every page gets turned.
Yeah, you know, we've done, we've done great work with that.
So that's, that's really good.
Okay, great.
All right. So thank you. And if you need anything, we're here for you.
Thank you so much.
Have a great night.
There's, um, there's outdoor dining here, and I have our building official here. And I'd like to just go over that a little bit more with one of the ordinances that we have on here, and that's for regulations under the licensing, licensing of outdoor...
And in the committee's agenda, you'll see James' revised or recommended revisions and...
There are revisions on here.
Yes.
I did see that for the outdoor cafes in the towns of Rochelle Park. So there's a couple of things. Could you just come over?
Yeah, so, you know, thank you for having me tonight. You know, this is obviously important to everybody from the township standpoint and for our local, you know, dining establishment. Not sure how many people are going to take advantage of this operation, but, you know, every town is unique in its own ways, different areas, downtown areas, you know, some, you know, main thoroughfares, you know, obviously some restaurants are located on, you know, main thoroughfares like, you know, West Passaic Street right here. So I don't think it's something that we might want to rush. We might want to take a deep dive into this and see how we could take this somewhat of a model ordinance and kind of bring it into our own for we don't affect, you know, or have a negative impact on our local establishments. A lot of items in here, you know, it would make it very difficult for a lot of our dining establishments to really comply with. Also, one of the first things is everyone has to file a site plan application with the board, which is a little intense, in my opinion. So, you know, one of my first recommendations would be if you couldn't comply with the general standards for public way dining, yeah, you can make a site plan application. But I totally agree, for private property, they definitely should make a site plan application because, you know, there's so many different areas on private property where this use could exist. You know, and, you know, obviously, you know, it's quite extensive, but, and I don't know if you want to go through each item, and I don't think this is the probably place to do it, but, you know, maybe if, you know, they could table this, and, you know, we could do a detailed, you know, look at, you know, what our actual, you know, frontage is on some of these, you know, businesses such as, you know, you know, do they have 52 inches even? You know, and there's some contradicting items in here. You know, I would think the timing, you know, we'd want to kind of sync up with our noise ordinance. Some of these operations can, you know, go to 12 o'clock at night. You know, if you have a restaurant that orders a residential neighborhood, I don't think they're going to be too appreciative of people, you know, eating outside till, you know, midnight. So, you know, my recommendation, and, you know, having to deal with the business owners when they come in, you know, I would like to give them, you know, a more positive response and not something that's, you know, a little, you know, contradicting, you know, throughout.
Yes, no, I think it's a good, it's a very good recommendation to see how it fits into your community. The only contradiction, though, was the 60 and 52 inches that I saw. You believe there's other provisions that are contradictory other than that?
Um, yeah, there's, there's stuff in there about like awnings and umbrellas and other items.
What, you mean a ticket system with other ordinances?
No, 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 within here.
Within here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, look, I'll...
I'm surprised to hear that. The only one I noticed was a 60. But that's, that either, either way, I think it's, it's a good idea to have you see how this fits into your community. I would not introduce it tonight because any change is going to require you to reintroduce and re-advertise, which will be, you know, cost money and really would be a waste of your time. So I think that allow this, allow this to go through this process, table it, and hopefully you can get those changes to me before the next meeting.
Definitely.
So they can be incorporated into the ordinance, and then the Township Committee can review it and decide whether they're in agreement with those proposed changes.
And just to get confirmation, you know, the committees, you know, would want to encourage the public way operation without a doubt? Or was that the intent to put the site plan requirement for all to try to have as much say over as possible?
No, that was, this was the first...
Yeah, I know.
The Township Committee did not, and it's, it's not unusual for a governing body to just, to say, can you draft an ordinance? They're not going over each provision and saying, put this in or put this out. They wait until they get the ordinance.
Okay.
And then they'll look at it, and then they'll say, as you're pointing out, well, this wasn't really fit our community, or can we change that? So to answer your question, no, they haven't, this wasn't something that came as a result of a discussion that took place. The discussion's taking place now.
Okay. So I wasn't sure if it came from the previous, you know, meeting when we had boarded up that.
It was a previous meeting with Mr. DiMaria, and that was in regards to outdoor cafe with the awning and the tent, and that's where this all originated.
Yes.
Of course, with Governor Murphy turning around saying, hey, you can have it from April to November and all that other stuff. This is where it all started. So our attorney here decided, you know, he drafted this for our professionals to look at, too, to say, you know, should we, could we, just like you're doing now?
Yeah.
There's not a problem with tabling this until even next meeting, we can sign. Now, I understand we're doing April to November, but that's what we're looking at for where they could, they could have this if the Township Committee so chooses to do so. So we're a little bit on a clock here with that because we're end of February going into March. You have your first read, your second read, and then you can adopt it. I agree to table it. I don't know if everybody else, we can take a motion. I can ask for a motion to table that ordinance, number 1219-25, for further review. And then it would come back, and that's the outdoor cafe in the Township of Rochelle Park. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Table. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Paul Paul?
Committeewoman Otola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeeman Truinsky?
Yes.
And Mayor Judge Kevell?
Yes. All right, so we're going to table this until we get further...
I'll get out there and survey everything, and I'll get this to you by next week.
I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, James.
All right, well, so now, just, I have here New Jersey Property Tax Relief, that this has just come out recently, where it's a senior freeze, if you are a resident born before 1959, permanently disabled resident, receiving self-security, and an anchor program. They're combining the two, and it's called Stay New Jersey for Seniors, Senior Homeowners. Now, this will be presented to senior at the senior meetings on May 22nd at 1:30 PM at the, during their meeting. And, but if there's questions about this, you have already, Mrs. Wells has the information in the office. She did get in contact with people. We're going to actually, she actually has a speaker coming, thank you for giving that, to try to...
It is a senior meeting, but anybody is welcome to it.
Everybody could come, everybody can come to it. And it gives you an idea of how they're combining the two, and I believe it's up to 6,500 that you can, you can recoup on this. But there's a lot of questions, and a lot of people are looking at the application saying, well, how do we do this, and where do we go about? So this is something that might interest a lot of people. There are, there is a phone number to reach out, there's a website to reach out, and we can take a look at that. Also, on here, I just want to say that we're going to just introduce then the one ordinance for the first read, and the rest would be more adoptions of the others. And there's other four there, right? And then we have the other two that we had. All right, so with that being said, may I have a motion to open to public?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll, I'll second. Committeewoman Otola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeeman Truinsky?
Yes.
And Mayor Judge Kevell?
Yes.
And Mayor, if I can just then go over the ground rules. If you please state your name and the town in which you live in. Also, each person will be limited to three minutes for comments or questions. As to questions, the mayor will direct the appropriate individual to address your questions, or perhaps the mayor or a committee person will address it itself, but all questions go through the mayor. A question did come up as to why three minutes and not four or five minutes. Three minutes has been deemed sufficient by our courts when someone challenged the amount of time that they were permitted to speak, typically in communities that have several people that are very engaged and attend the meetings, the town's limited to three minutes because they want to give everyone an opportunity. This town, based upon my limited experience, you actually have a lot of people show up at your meetings compared to other towns, which may only have one or two people show up. Also, with respect to the time limit, as you can see on tonight's agenda, you have four ordinances that are for second hearings. So tonight, someone could, if they wanted to, get at five different times and comment three minutes on each time. So, you know, most communities consider that more than sufficient for residents to be able to address their concerns, and of course, you're not limited to addressing your concerns at a meeting. You could always call the Township Administrator, or I'm sure reach out to one of the committee people. So there's, there's plenty of opportunity for you to do so. One other report I want to give, so I can save Ms. Boniface some time, that she doesn't have to use it up on the Northwest Financial issue. The mayor, as you know, Ms. Boniface, for those of you who were here at the last meeting, asked that this be looked into. The mayor directed me to look into the sequence of events that led to the appointment of Northwest Financial. Our Township Administrator forwarded to my office all the email communications and the resolutions dealing with the acceptance and approval of the Northwest proposal. And what I can report to the public and to the Township Committee was that on March 19, 2024, there was a discussion brought up by the attorney, the redevelopment attorney in closed session, as a strategy as to whether an outside company should be retained with respect to reviewing or preparing an analysis with respect to a pilot program, which, by the way, is negotiable. So that part of the discussion can take place in closed session. What cannot take place in closed session is then the decision as to whether to proceed and advertise for a professional. And that decision should have been made in public as to whether or not to go forward and seek proposals for a, an expert in this area. Next, on April 10th, 2024, Northwest Financial did in fact submit a proposal. That proposal should have been made to avail, available to the public if, in fact, anyone requested it. It's a public document, and it was subject to Oprah. That proposal was then, apparently, from what I can tell, you know, I wasn't here, so it's sometimes hard to know exactly what took place, but it appears on July 25th, 2024, that the proposal was approved, but that was approved in closed session, and that was not appropriate. The proposal should have been approved and discussed in public. However, having said that, and although after the fact, and it shouldn't have been after the fact, because the company then started performing work before, before approval was made at a public meeting, on October 9th, 2024, a resolution was then in fact adopted, accepting the proposal and authorizing the work to be performed, which in essence cured the defect in the fact that it was done in closed session and should have been done in public. So that being said, there were missteps in the process. It was cured by the action taking place on October 9th, 2024. And although it shouldn't happen at times when a discussion starts in closed session where this is permitted, sometimes it then, let's say, takes a different direction, and rather than say, well, wait a minute, that part has to be discussed and open, sometimes they do continue to get discussed and closed. So hopefully that addresses the issue, and if anybody has any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer from the Township Committee.
I, I believe you, with the three minutes, but it is, it is, it is my right, as running the chair, to say, you know, they can have longer if they want to, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's understood, too.
And I will keep track, and I will let you know when this, you have 30 seconds left, so you're not just cut short in milliseconds.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, Mayor, I'm sorry, one last thing. Point of order, Mr. Scatino.
Sorry, Michael, I see you getting...
I'm sorry. I'm just noticing in Resolution 02574, the second paragraph, it says, the resurfacing of Howard Avenue from Somerville Street to Patton Court.
Where are we?
That's actually, it should say from James Street, and if you turn to the supporting documents, the engineer's estimate, you'll see the limits are James Street to Patton Court. So just if we could correct that in the resolution?
Yes.
And that was actually tabled, Mr. Scatino, so I don't know if there's a different point of order for that to come out of?
Yes, so that, a motion has to be made to untable it, and then it should be approved as a...
Wait, what was tabled? What are you talking, which one of this one was tabled? Which one you're talking about was tabled?
Uh, 025-74, it was Howard Avenue. If you recall, Dave came up at last meeting and had us...
No, that was this.
It wasn't this one?
That wasn't this, no.
This is the one for the bed.
Okay, my, my bed, then.
We have it.
The other one's on.
Okay. Well, then, let's make sure that that, because that was tabled, so that one needs to be...
And as a new resolution, it goes on.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. Yeah, so this one, then, this one's just the, says Somerville Street to Patton Court. It needs to say James Street.
Okay, so...
Wait a minute, no, no, I'm sorry. So the one that was tabled, that does have to be untabled.
Untabled, right.
Because otherwise it will have to be carried every meeting until you take an action on it.
Did you change the resolution number on it?
I did. I will put it back to...
Change resolutions, so we'll have to go back to that one.
That's right. 25063.
Which one are you changing, Michael?
257. I will tell you in one minute. It is 02, 025063, so it's 057.
On the consent agenda?
Yeah, on the consent agenda.
So 63 changes to 57?
Yeah. 063 should be 057.
Okay. 063, 057, okay.
So just before you vote on the consent agenda, have a motion to untable that resolution and add it to the consent agenda.
Perfect.
Okay. So we're untabling the 057 and add to it consent. Got it. Thank you. Sorry, Michael. Please, please. Thank you, yes.
Hi, everyone. Michael Warren, 181 West Old Street. I just wanted to come up to the mic for two, two quick things. One, I am very much in support of the ordinance to do the outdoor dining thing. I really think Rochelle Park could get on board with that, especially in my mind envisioning West Passaic being at some point, you know, a place where redevelopment could occur, that could become a real downtown-ish kind of a street for us. Maybe at some point Rochelle Lab, there's a few more homes on Rochelle Lab, but I, I hope that you guys can work around the town ordinances that Mr. DiMaria brought up to, to make that happen. I think it would be attractive for businesses like that to see that we have an ordinance. So when development does occur, we could try to attract those places. Rochelle Park is a very walkable town in most of its areas, and to be able to get to a restaurant without having to get into a car, one, we don't want people drinking and driving, you know? We want people to be able to enjoy our town without having to leave and go to other places to spend money. So I hope you guys really consider that ordinance and make that happen within reason, and I really appreciate you guys taking that up. My second thing is to, Ms., to the mayor, I know last fall, you and I spoke about a community garden, couple of locations possible. You know, Team Rochelle Park wants to, you know, have some type of a community garden that people can come, whether it's scouts, adults, people who are interested and don't have the, the public space to have a garden to grow particular types of vegetables or plants or whatever. And we talked, I think you mentioned the Knights of Columbus are open to it.
I did.
And we kind of, the holidays came and went.
Right.
But I'd like to know if, you know, we, we could still go meet with them to see if they have space for us to use.
Yes, I, I talked to Gil not too long ago, I'm going to say about a month or so ago, and mentioned it again.
Okay.
And he said, absolutely, you can reach out to him. I think also Mr. Sorrentino, I spoke to about it, they have a garden area in the back that actually has a watering system in it.
Oh, beautiful.
And the idea that was brought up...
Great.
I mean, we were talking about this last year, was to have maybe residents who want to plant something, they want to plant flowers, they want to plant, I don't know, pumpkins or whatever they want to plant. There's almost like little beds there, and it has a watering system for it. They were very enthused about it, but you'd have to clean it up.
Yeah.
You know, break it out.
Yeah.
Get volunteers to do it.
Okay.
But to best of my knowledge, they're still willing to do it, and of course, you can reach out.
All right, well, we have a Team Rochelle Park meeting tomorrow, so I'm going to put that on our agenda.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
See if there are people interested and then if we can maybe do some community outreach together, maybe we could have something at the senior center, people who are interested in that kind of community garden, so I appreciate that.
I think it was also, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry. I think it was also brought up the fact that, you know, there's some people in apartments right across from there.
Yeah, yeah. I'm up.
No, no, just wanted, let me finish.
Okay.
Because I'm taking your time. There's people in the apartments that are across the street and they wanted to do some kind of gardening and they can't really do it.
They don't have, yeah, exactly.
I think we talked about that. I don't know how you want to do it, if it's, you know, a multitude of people on a first come, first serve basis, but again, you guys can discuss that.
Yeah, we can kind of sort that out, so.
But it's at least an area to start.
Okay. I just want to make sure it was still available.
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else?
Diane Verhassel, Rochelle Park. Just three quick things first. I know a lot of people might mention it, but the DPW, I just want to commend, they have been doing an awesome job between the past few snowstorms. I mean, you get up and the snow was already off the street and I'm on the side street, so I really appreciate it, Dave, the work you guys are doing. Also, at the library meeting last night, a decision was made, starting in March, the first Sunday in March, the library is going to be open on Sundays also. This is something that a few residents have definitely expressed an interest in, so we're going to be trying it from March through June, then and see on the interest that comes. What we're also thinking of doing is changing some of the programs that we've run weeknights or Saturdays, have some of those on Sunday, because people, or parents, I should say, that are working might not be able to get their kids there, so if they're hopefully off on Sunday, it might give them more options to come. So it's just going to be 12 to 3 for now, just as a beginning, and we'll see. If there's a bigger interest, we can always expand the hours, but you know, we're going to see how well it works and hopefully a lot of people will make it there and, you know, enjoy it. And my last thing, of course, I appreciate the committee and the police supporting us and if there's anyone else who wants to buy tickets to the spaghetti dinner, please let me know.
I apologize, I apologize, sorry.
Thank you. It helps the scouts and they do appreciate it. Thank you.
Diane, what was the time and date for that, please?
It is, the dinner?
Yes.
On March 22nd and there's two seatings, 2:30 to 4:00 and 4:30 to 6:00. They're held at the Legion, the same place we've always held it.
And 4:00 to 6:00 is the second one, right?
4:30 to 6:00.
4:30 to 6:00.
It just gives us that half an hour to kind of reset the tables. And Dean, if you could let, I know your officer is coming in fact tomorrow to pick up the tickets for me, but if you could remind, I'll tell him tomorrow, but just remind whichever officers are on that day. Two years ago, they came and they appreciated being able to take out. We did do that last year, but I don't know if they all came. So it's just an op, an option for them, they can, well, anybody we doing takeout, but for them, if they're on duty, they can take it and, you know, we, we fill the boxes for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sir, thank you for looking into the Northwell Financial. Last year I figured out a lot of stuff was in closed session that didn't belong there. Okay, let's go into this. We're going to talk about fire prevention. In 2018, when I sat on the Township Committee, I was looking at the bills list and I saw a large purchase come out of a trust account. So what I did was I looked into it.
Sorry, sorry.
Start it over.
Just keep going, Linda, just keep going.
Start over.
Yeah.
Anyway, I looked into it. I took a lot of abuse from a volunteer group in this town. But what I found out was the funds do not go into a trust account. The funds that are paid for the fees, they go into the general funds of the town to pay for the fire prevention, but they don't go in a trust account. It ended up being $250,000 in a trust account. That was a slush fund. It was a slush fund. People admitted to me it was a slush fund and I took abuse beyond abuse. Right, Gail? So the penalties go to them. I didn't know they get split between the fire department, so that's stuff you may not have to put in your budget if they have enough penalty money. But the one thing I want to say is I have all my paperwork for this home. The fire prevention department didn't make money for a lot of years.
I'm sorry, didn't?
It was, did not make money.
Okay.
Didn't even cover itself. Those departments, building department, fire prevention, they should make enough money to cover themselves. The taxpayers should not be paying for those departments. So if it's not making money, it should be a shared service, just like the court. I've said it time and time again, they should be shared services. The other thing, Chief, I asked you last time I brought up that there's an extra police officer hired. Is that true? In 2023, you had 23 officers. How many do you have now, including yourself?
24.
Thank you. So you misled this Township Committee when you told them you were filling a retirement. You weren't.
No.
You were not.
Officer Lamas was hired as an additional officer based on the Township Committee's approval of that. And then when we.
Did you let them know he was a new officer adding on to the 24? Were you told?
So.
Mr. Miller, were you told that this was an add-on?
If I recall, that was at the February 14th meeting last year. They, they showed the body cam footage as a rationale to add an officer. So that was when we made the motion and it was approved to look into hiring another officer, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
My understanding was time and time again, we heard this was to fill a retirement, right in this meeting.
The most current hire was to fill a retirement.
But the previous. You hired the previous, you hired the retirement a couple months earlier because you interviewed. So you said, we're hiring him for the forthcoming retirement. So you added a police officer.
This committee added a police officer, that's correct.
This town has not grown. Just because you show a video with your officers cursing up the stairway, not acting like officers, don't tell me the rage and all that, I don't want to hear it.
30 seconds.
Gail, this is for you. Did you hear this statement from, from the arbiter, arborist? When you have a better chance of getting grants, when you have a commission, you're shooting down something good in town again, constantly. What have you brought to the table in your five years here? You're the senior member here. What have you brought to the table? Nothing. Zip. Zip, zip. Stop ruining the good going on.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, anyone else, please?
Mr. Kingma.
Jeez.
Is this not stopping?
I got it.
Okay. No? Tommy, help. Hello, Mr. Kingma.
Hello, Dave Kingma, Rochelle Park, Madison Ave.
One second, they're just trying to fix this, please. I know we have to have the.
Why do they put him on speed dial?
No, it's just the clock thing is. Okay, I'm sorry, please continue.
Okay. At the last meeting, I had some comments about the combining of the two land use boards. And afterward I reflected on it and I, I thought I may have said something that sounded harsh and I didn't mean that at all.
No, that's fine, no.
The comment was not to get caught in the trap of knowing the price of everything and the value of nothing. Well, I went to the planning board meeting recently and I found out that certain tools that had been asked for for years will be provided to the people on the board in the way of a pamphlet of the rules of the town. And not, and of course that'll cost a little bit of money, maybe a lot of money, I don't know. But at the same time, it shows that the board members are valued. So at least to a certain extent, I have to dial back my comment from the last time.
No worries. Thank you.
And I didn't make clear that it's not always so easy to save money with your administration of land use. A lot of the expense is covered by the applicants themselves through escrow. The expense that doesn't get recovered is if for one reason or another decisions end up in Superior Court or whatever and you know where that goes.
I do.
Anyway, on the, on the outdoor cafes, I think there's a rule in there, I think it was letter R, I'm not certain, that we're not turning the outdoors into the smoking room, more or less.
Right, there, yeah.
I, I hope that doesn't disappear, I know it's been tabled, but I hope that doesn't disappear.
I don't believe that's going to disappear, Mr. Kingma.
Right. One other point, if I could. I noticed when I was looking up certain addresses and block and lot numbers on TaxMat and I got in touch with the Bergen County records, because that's where they're really kept. And I found that my own house has a new block and lot number, but I don't think it, might not have been settled yet, but in at least the one database I've looked at, it was. And so I checked other things, everybody's, everybody's property is, and I hadn't heard.
Yeah, the maps, the maps have been updated and note numbers, so I, I know that, we were actually, some people were worried about their, they weren't going to get their tax bill because it just had the block, you know where I'm going on this, right?
You can see all my, yeah.
I can see this happening, but they didn't get the, you know, the paper tax bill that you usually get every month, every year.
Of course, I'm concerned with that as well and I hope that you watch it very carefully.
They are, they are working with that, Mr. Kingma, yes.
And I think I'm a little bit well-known about my obsessions about little, little typographical errors or little smidgens of property that sort of are in one town and another and that sort of thing and everything. But when I looked at the database, the first, very first record is way out of line.
The first one? I'm sorry?
The first record in their database. I hope they review their work and go over it again. It's, it's way out of line. It's right here.
Yeah.
I would suggest you reach out to our tax assessor with that information, because those maps are pretty much done and they've been submitted to the state for approval, so over here, Mr. Kingma.
Mr. Kingma.
I would, I would suggest, I would suggest if you.
Sound from that.
Yeah, if you found something that you feel is that off base, please forward it to the tax assessor, because those maps have already been submitted to the state for approval.
Well, maybe, maybe I'm not looking at the best database.
And that's why I think if you have a conversation with the tax assessor, maybe you'll be able to best explain it.
But if you have access to the, the actual official one, look at the very first record. I don't see how possibly a property, a real property, land and improvements over the years managed to move from West Passake Street to Essex Street. I mean, what do you, you pick up your life? It's impossible.
I think they just changed some of the, the way the map was set up and that numbering, but you can talk to Mr. Ty, he's our, still till the end of March, you know, he's in our tax assessor.
He was in tonight.
As a matter of fact, yeah, he was.
He was here tonight.
Um, he left a little early, but maybe you can, you want to, you know, want to give him a call and find out, you know, because you have a valid concern, but.
Well, I, you know, it's not my property.
Oh, I understand.
But I just worry, gee, if it's the first record, it starts off on the wrong foot.
Sure, I understand.
I hope, I hope they're getting it right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Here I go, see, no one. May I have a motion to close to public?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second. Committeewoman Otola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeeman Truinsky?
Yes.
And Mayor Judge Cavello.
Yes. Okay, so we're going to go into the introduction of ordinance. Now, we took the one off, we tabled the ordinance for the outdoor dining and now we're just going to have the Shade Tree one. Mrs. Wells, would you please read that ordinance?
Mayor Judge Cavello asks for a motion to introduce by title on the first read in ordinance number 1218-25 by way of resolution number 025-061, an ordinance established in a shade tree commission and to be published in full in the Bergen Record with notice of public hearing to be held on February 26, 2025.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Committeewoman Otola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeeman Truinsky?
Yes.
And Mayor Judge Cavello.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Let's go over, now we're going to move over to the, since we're tableing that one, we're going to move into the ordinance adoption. Correct? Okay, so we have ordinance number 1214-25. Mrs. Wells, would you read that, please?
Mayor Judge Cavello asks for a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance number 1214-25, an ordinance to amend Chapter 16 entitled First Aid and Emergency Squad of the Township Code of the Township of Rochelle Park State of New Jersey.
So may I have a motion, please, to open a public? I'll make the motion to open a public. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Committeewoman Otola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeeman Truinsky?
Yes.
And Mayor Judge Cavello.
Yes. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing or hearing no one, I would like to move forward. We have a roll call, please. I'm sorry, motion, I'm sorry, motion.
I'll motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
May I have a roll call?
Committeewoman Otola?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeeman Truinsky?
Yes.
And Mayor Judge Cavello.
Yes. So now we're going to move on to the.
Adoption 1214-25.
Yes, yeah, thank you. We're doing the adoption on that. Mrs. Wells, would you please?
Mayor Judge Cavello asks for a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance number 1215-25, an ordinance to amend Chapter 21 entitled Length of Service Awards Program of the Township Code of the Township of Rochelle Park State of New Jersey.
May I have a motion to open to public?
Motion.
Second, please?
Second.
Committeewoman Otola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeeman Truinsky?
Yes.
And Mayor Judge Cavello.
Yes. May I have a motion to adopt? Before I do that, I'm sorry, I want to just say something. So this length of service award program is for firefighters or any EMS that are in the military who are serving, and this is under the LoSAP program and also they're, they would get their allowance for their uniforms. These are veterans that are, are the active military that are actually there and they, they go by how many calls you make to achieve your LoSAP number or achieve your credits to have your uniform allowance that's given once a year. So I think this is a very nice thing that we're, you know, everybody's hopefully going to agree to for our veterans that are serving and we thank them for all their service and I just wanted to say, you know, this is a good thing happening in Rochelle Park and we appreciate all the veterans that do everything for us and keep us safe. So may I have a motion to adopt this, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
And may I have a roll call?
Committeewoman Otola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeeman Truinsky?
Yes.
Mayor Judge Cavello.
Yes, thank you. So we're going down to the ordinance, let's see the, okay, here is the land use board, so it's 1216-25, would you read this, please?
Mayor Judge Cavello asks for a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance number 1216-25, an ordinance establishing a joint planning board, zoning board of adjustment and amendment, an ordinance, ordinance entitled Land Use and Development Regulations of the Code of the Township of Rochelle Park.
May I have a motion to open a public, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Committeewoman Otola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeeman Truinsky?
Yes.
And Mayor Judge Cavello.
Yes.[1588.75] Anybody from the public like to speak on this land use motion ordinance? Seeing or hearing no one, maybe we have a motion to close to public and move on for the adoption of this?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Committeewoman Ottola? I'd like to discuss.
Sure.
So, um, emerging of the boards was tried about, um, over, little over 10 years ago, and it did not work, and it was split back apart. Part of the reason it was, um, put, split back apart was because there were too many, um, cases to deal with. And rather than meeting once a month, they had to meet multiple times a month. The, I had started on the planning board in, um, 2015, that's back when they were separated again, so they were recovering from that. Also, some applications require multiple meetings, especially some big ones, like across the street went on for months, but not just that one. We've had a daycare center that was voted down, but that met for months. So if you miss a meeting, you have to listen to the tapes of those meetings, the recordings of those meetings, if you want to vote on that. So when, um, the board members had to meet twice a month because there were so many cases, there was a lot of backlog of listening to recorded, um, recorded meetings. Also, um, you know, the tenant reviews that we have actually invite residents to come to speak about the businesses that are near their homes. So, um, doing away with some tenant reviews would, um, prevent that from happening. There was one example that there was an office building and residents came. We didn't realize how bad the parking of the, um, the office building, the workers in that office building and even the guests of that office building, we did not know because the people weren't calling the police. But when they were invited to come to the meeting, they would talk about the issues, and it actually brought that issue to the township committee for them to address it with the police. But if it wasn't for those kind of tenant reviews that the planning board had, that issue would have never have been known, much less attempted to have been resolved. So I think, um, this needs to be looked at more. I think trying to combine the boards with as busy as both boards are is really putting a lot on one board, and it's going to, um, cause multiple, multiple sessions to be needed, and things are going to get lost in the, in trying to accomplish more biting off the nitrogen.
Great. So if I remember and I look back on the zoning last year and then just recently, I think there, that it was, there was not, one of them, there was nothing, a couple of them, there was nothing on the zoning. I know there's just one coming up this time. Planning had a few, but the zoning was not the way that it maybe used to be back in the day. That's the first thing. I did check back on some of that just to make sure that combining it wouldn't be overwhelming. I'm not quite sure why you're saying that, um, you had to listen to tapes to vote?
Yes. So if there's a case that is not in one night, for example, there's multiple testimonies, then it takes, you cannot vote on it if you don't hear all those testimonies.
Correct.
So you'd have to, uh...
Could you not read, is there not minutes taken for that also?
You need to hear all the testimony.
Okay, so...
So, and Mrs. Wells can, go ahead.
So in, in, with the bigger, um, development across the street, 200 Midland, the self-storage that's going there, a lot of times the applicant will hire a sturgeon, a sturgeon first, and she comes and she does the transcripts. So if you don't make a meeting, you can read the transcript.
So you can read it.
If, if they exist, if there is one. If not, you do have to listen to the, to the CD because of the fact that minutes are not verbatim, you know, word for word, so you listen to the tape.
But that's true of any application.
Anything, but that's...
Whether it could be any board, even if you had the two boards, if someone missed a meeting...
You still have to do it.
Right.
So I don't see the difference, but go ahead.
So there is a difference, though, because sometimes these meetings go to very late at night.
No, you can do a time limit on that, but go ahead.
We do, but then you would just extend how many meetings there are that there, there can be times where you don't have an application on a meeting. But with all the development that we could potentially have coming up, you're going to have multiple meetings for some of these bigger projects.
Which you normally would, but...
Yes, and if you're going to combine, it's going to be, it's already, already on the zoning, I'm sorry, on the planning board, we've had multiple meetings in a month for some of the bigger applications. And, um, because they do take, they are very time-consuming for the bigger. You have, um, a parking expert, you know, a traffic expert. You have a building expert. You have all kinds of different testimonies to be heard. So already, even though there are times where there might be, um, a meeting where there are no applications, there are multiple times where we're already meeting more than once a month. And to put that all on one board, when that's already happening with two separate boards, the agenda is going to be too much for one board.
Well, I don't know if that's the case, and I appreciate what you're saying, but I don't know if it's necessarily moving in the future. The tenant review board, part of it was, I don't know, I discussed it, and I think the, if you, if you have tenant review for every single tenant review, they don't have to stay in Rochelle Park. They can go to Maywood or another town and not have that tenant review. There are quite a few places that don't have that tenant review. This is something I looked at, too. I understand with the neighboring, I get it. But listen, if you're from Rochelle Park for long enough, and I believe there are people that may apply for these positions, they may know exactly where that location is and explain that driveway might be too big. I attended the planning board meeting, this past planning board meeting, and it was brought up about a house, um, being built. And the first question I asked was, you know, property was being subdivided, and they wanted to build a house on it, and I said, well, how do you get the two driveways? How far are the driveways? I knew exactly where that house was, I knew exactly where that land was, and I know which street it was on, so I knew, I got some of the details. I understand your concern, but I believe that's the board to decide how many meetings they want, when they want it. I believe I could set up the first, uh, night for the meeting, which I'm looking probably the last week of, uh, last Thursday of the month. I believe we have, um, the planning board meeting at that time. Uh, and I think we could, if it didn't work and you went back, maybe it might work this time. There, there might be different people on it that may be, maybe a little more expertise in things that might help it move it forward. As far as the land use, you know, I believe this is a good thing to move forward with. I think it combines it to, you don't pay for two attorneys, you don't have to pay for all that, you can get things rolling very quickly. And if you have to review stuff, which you normally would have to anyway, so be it. The people that want to put the time in to do that, I'm hoping they would volunteer for it. That's just my opinion. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to chime in. I, I appreciate your comments, too, Gil. I, I sat on the zoning board for a period of time where we heard a case over a year. That was Harley Davidson, the cube spot that went up behind Harley Davidson. What we did was we prioritized the time, certain part of the meeting for that case, and then other cases that came in for a one-shot deal came in, and they were heard first, or they were heard earlier, they, we had to. And we had to delegate the time and, and separate it, you know, appropriately. One of the reasons, um, I think, uh, one of the other issues that I've, I saw in the past was there was a lack of communication between the planning board and the zoning board. And there was a disconnect with, if a developer came in before and made his application before the planning board, it almost seemed like, I, you know, I can't say for sure, but it almost seemed like if it didn't work out in the planning board, it'd bring it to the zoning board for a different angle on the application. And I was not involved with the planning board, I was on the zoning board. But the disconnect, again, was there, it was something that was denied in zoning came through and, you know, got all of a sudden started getting filled, saying, how'd that get through, we're just in zone, and all of a sudden something's going up and say, well, we didn't hear anything on that. And then I, you know, as being a taxpayer in town and being a sitting on the board, it's like, how do we not know? How do we not know about this? So with all, to your point, with all the development that's going to go on, I think it's more important to have a streamline of communication with the people that are going to be investing their time on this board and being the firewall for the town to make sure that these applications come in and are truly heard by, you know, some open eyes and open ears and not, not somehow pushed aside. I, I just, to me, it makes more sense to have a, um, one board for that reason. We also have, like any other board, we have alternates. And if there's going to be somebody that's going to be absent for a period of time, that all, those alternates will definitely be involved. They're going to be sitting on, on the day of due, and they're can be very much involved and take that position. So if somebody has to be out for a period of time, you know, the seat will be filled.
So for clarification on your comment, the, the building department determines which board the applicant goes to. They don't get to choose, oh, it didn't work on the zoning board, we're going to the planning. That doesn't work that way.
Correct. But when the application is, when there's a different angle on the property to be presented, it can be presented in a different angle for a different board. So there's been times where I saw, in my time on the zoning board, applicants, again, that I saw applications go before the zoning board that didn't go through or didn't get approved on our board, but somehow that project went through. Maybe it didn't get all the same criteria it was approaching on our board, but it got somehow approved on a planning board level for other reasons. So it was a different, it was, it was very smart, I guess, land use, um, legal advice on how they did that. But it was, again, it was just a disconnect in communication. The planning board never came to us and said, hey, this is what's going on. And the zoning board likewise, we never went to the planning board and said, hey, this is what's going on. It was like two separate...
But that's what the building department is for.
Well, no, what, what happens sometimes is, as I think, as everybody knows, the zoning board hears D variances. So let's say someone came in for a D six, which is a height variance, and they went before the zoning board and they didn't like the decision there. They eliminate the D six variance, and then they go to the planning board. So it does, it can happen, and typically it's that what triggers it, is the elimination of the D variance. Or they're before the planning board and they see, well, I don't know, this doesn't look too good before the planning board, let me change my application and add a D variance. Let me increase the height or, you know, something else that's going to trigger a D variance. So that's how you can somewhat shock what you think is going to be the more receptive board.
Right, okay. Anybody else? No, okay. Sue? We're going to take a...
Do you have a motion and second yet?
Yeah, I have a motion and a second.
So you need a roll?
Yeah.
Committeewoman Ottola?
No.
Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeeman, uh, Chulinski?
Absolutely.
And Mayor Judge Cavello.
Yes. Motion, move, pass. Ordinance, okay. Sue, now we're going to do the township ordinance, um, adoption of 1217-25. Mrs. Wells, would you please read that?
Mayor Judge Cavello asks for a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 1217-25. An ordinance to amend Part 1, Chapter 36 of the Township Code of the Township of Rochelle Park, State of New Jersey. This is the recreation.
Just to make it clear, this is to increase the members on the recreation board. Sue, may I have a motion to open a public?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Committeewoman Ottola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeeman Chulinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Judge Cavello.
Yes. Anybody from the public like to speak about this? No? Okay. Hearing or seeing none? Motion to close to public?
Motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second. Committeewoman Ottola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeeman Chulinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Judge Cavello.
Yes, may I have a motion to adopt?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Committeewoman Ottola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeeman Chulinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Judge Cavello.
Yes. Motion, move, option. Okay. So now this is four, there's two things I want to say before we move forward here. The land use, uh, went through, the land use board went through. There are volunteer forms on the table that Mrs. Wells has left. If you are interested in being on that, please fill that out. If you want to fill it out now, she's here, or you want to drop it off, you can also do it online, you can send it, email it to Mrs. Wells. The second thing is this is two positions open. By the way, uh, people who are applying for the land use board will be, have a short interview, we'll get a short interview, um, just to see, uh, moving forward with that. Second thing is, uh, this is adding two more positions, and they will be, there's also volunteer forms up there for recreation. Once again, we appreciate everything the volunteers do. We cannot thank you enough for volunteering your time. But if you'd like to be, um, I believe those are two going to come in us on the board, and that'll be two more on the recreation board itself, if not the other alternate will move up. So this will hopefully give a little bit more people to help recreation moving forward and all the activities that they do. So now we're going to move on to, we only have the resolutions. All items listed below are considered to be retained and non-controversial by the township committee and will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless the committee member or citizen or so requests, and in which case the items will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in a normal sequence on the agenda as part of general orders. We do have to table the one that says, uh, Resolution 025063, correct?
Untable it.
Untable it.